Public comments. With that, we discussed the email of parking. Is that what that came in? We all go to an email, right?
Right.
Do you have to update us on it? Or do you want to do that through?
Yeah, I mean, remember, when the board gets a complaint, you refer to the superintendent by following policy. So superintendent reached out to the principal and asked him, the principal was calling student head yet to meet with the principal to bring into the principal's attention or bring into the superintendent. So I want to put words enough last. Principal and I spoke. You were going to reach out and request a meeting.
Yep, met with the student yesterday while I was counseling. And made a phone call.
And I also responded with an email and said, we have public comments at this meeting. And we generally have two student representatives. I found they're a good way to productive discuss things with.
So there's not much parking spots for all the cars.
Comments you would like to make.
Let's wait, yeah.
Why don't we?
We could do, yeah. Change reports.
Change reports, okay. Moving on, we'll move on to the finance. We have the treasurer's report in the packet and as well as a $1,000 grant from SBC Community Phase Learning. It sounds like Renee, so action requested. Can I have a motion to the Senate?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No, there's a lot of them online. Phoebe is here, Richard is here. And golf is here.
Okay. We'll move on to item three, which is the FY25 budget discussion.
I'm sorry, some people might have set, did you grab? So what is currently posted, what's tonight's agenda? Share momentarily. Some updates. So I'm, this and subsequent versions, what I'll do is try to identify any narratives, pages, and blue italics. Just find, I got networked to the color printer now, so I can actually print them so you guys can see them here. And these, and so just the versions that are online. But what I want to point out before everybody starts tearing into everything. So as usual, the first page is the budget by category with followed by a three-page narrative. Page five, five and six is the budget broken down by department or function. And then there's a narrative that's associated with that. You get to page 12 of the packet. I believe there was a request for athletics teams budget. So that is what page 12 is. And then after we get through the updates, I'll jump back over to page 13, which is projected revenue. And then we can get some preliminary tax stuff, which are pages 14 and 15. If you're looking at the version online, there's also another probably seven, eight, nine pages that basically combined the budget by function. And then it breaks it out by category under each function. So it gets a little bit more detail for those of you that are interested to see that. So I will go ahead and share the screen. So the version that you have in front of you tonight, draft two, we have some updates from interim athletic director and director of facilities management and operations. And then a couple of other things that have come up since we last met. So namely, on the salaries and benefits lines, you'll notice there's some strike-throughs. And there has been an opportunity recently that came up for some comprehensive supports, the grant opportunity for middle school. Mrs. Boudreaux was able to basically coordinate with the AOE and confirm some of these positions that are currently whether your ESSR will fit the intent of what we're going to be using the comprehensive supports for. So we've taken them out of this draft. And those will be in that grant going forward for the next couple of years. So that's the universal design for learning coach that was requested at the middle school. And then one of the family engagement specialists that we had noted there is going into that grant. The one that remains in this local budget would be the one that's serving the high school right now. So those are the changes to the positions anyway. And then a couple of things I wanted to know on the benefits was firstly, I, when I was reviewing it, I noticed that there's a couple of us working on budgets simultaneously. And I had noted on the previous narrative that we had decreased the 1% employer premium contribution for our support staff that actually hadn't been adjusted yet. So it has been corrected in this version, bringing that budget down. And then the next bullet, I have the reduction of health reimbursement arrangement budgets. I worked with human resources recently to have them, they put some reports for us to see historically over the last few years, what our membership has been using against those health reimbursement arrangements. Every July or every January 1st, everybody's HRA is reset. So they're fully eligible for what is negotiated at the state level through BI and the union. But we have found that not, some people are using it all, some people aren't using hardly any. So the average is somewhere in between. And it looks as though safely, conservatively, I'm pulling back what we're budgeting to a 75% exposure. I think maybe with another year or two experience mod that we can actually look at, we could probably pull that down a little bit more. But when we first switched to these high consumer-directed, high deductible health plans, we were budgeting 100%. So we have essentially a cushion that's built in this, one account that's linked to health equity. They basically pull money to cover the claims every week. And so last, I think year two or three, we reduced that to 90 or 95%. The last couple of years, I think we've been at 85. So this version, I pulled that back to 75% of our exposure. So that's the change in the benefits line. And then the other big changes that you're seeing on the operations line, Holly went through and pulled back a number of the items that she had identified as potentials. So the reupholstering of the seating in the high school auditorium has been removed, the budget for that, along with the hallway signage and bulletin boards at both middle school and high school. Pretty much all the work that we had identifying for the student center has been removed along with the furniture replacements there. Holly also noted that the door replacements that she had identified previously for the middle school aren't critical at this point. So that has been removed. And then on the high school ground side, parking lot lighting has been removed from the budget. A slight tweak to the entrance at the tech center. So that has been a reduction, noting it's more of a stair trip hazard right now, but these things need to get removed and fixed. So they always said it'll be a phase one of something that'll kind of occur over the next couple of years to get that ADEA combined and have the stairs not being a hazard. The ticket change was a siding replacement. So that's just a clarification of what was on the narrative before. And then this version of the budget does include funding for repair of the trap. So those are the changes you're seeing there. We did have an update on the tuition line. It's not complete yet, however. I did receive the announced tuition from Southwest Tech. But they do not have, we do not have the six semester rolling average from the AOE yet, which is one of the pieces of the puzzle to run those calculations. So basically, what you're seeing here before you is the announced tuition with all the data that we've received from the AOE thus far. But there will be one more factor once we get that, that'll either adjust those numbers up or down. That's pretty much all the changes in that show. So I will now jump over to, in the packet is page 13. It's the revenue table. It's a couple of items noted here. In speaking with the treasurer, we had some significant interest earnings when the interest rates started to turn around last year. We've seen that level off this year. And we're anticipating it to start kind of on the decline for FY25. But we have significantly adjusted the budget upward for anticipated investment earnings there. The salary reimbursement just factored potential salary and benefits increases to the folks that are employed by the Mount Anthony Union District, but are actually working in the Southwest Tech portion of the building. So at the end of every year, we basically reconcile how much those two custodians cost. And Southwest Tech basically reimburses us dollar for dollar on those expenses. And then the fund balance, I just dialed that in to what the numbers were that we have found from the, basically the shaking out of FY23, which is currently with the auditors. Okay, I did adjust the high school completion program too, given the consistency that we've seen in the past few years, that it has been over that $40,000. So I think we can probably safely assume that we'd be seeing that to be in that neighborhood for next year as well. So if you notice in this, in the center of that document or on the screen here, I have the general state support grant highlighted in blue. This is the number that is pretty much key to what gets factored into driving the tax rate. So this general state support grant, but it's also referred to as education spending. So this is a newer version of a tax calculation than we're used to seeing. I have historic data here in columns J and L. So when we used to have equalized pupils, and this was our expenditures offsetting revenues and then education spending, so essentially that general state support grant is line three. The AOE had to recalculate our FY24 education spending per pupil based on the changes coming about through Act 127, which is the new weighting of our students. So they took the numbers that we had and basically regenerated them with what they projected we would have had for long-term weighted ADM this year had Act 127 been in place. So we divide that, basically those number of pupils into our education spending to get what the education spending is that gets compared to the homestead property yield. Couple of things with Act 127. So looking at what we have here for the current year projection and the current graph that you have in front of you, our demand on the education fund is, you know, almost $30 million, which you can see is an increase of 18% of what it is this year. The present version of a long-term weighted ADM that I have, it's still labeled as preliminary. It's version two from the AOE. I'm fully expecting this number to change because it has already changed once from version one to version two. I can tell you that there's a lot of variation happening across the state. And we're having some difficulties. Everybody's trying to just sort out the new legislation and how everything needs to be reported, making sure students are getting reported on the correct uploads to the AOE. So we're working with many, many different players within our SU hold, many different pieces to the puzzle, whether it's homeless students, whether it's English language learners, whether it's our free and reduced numbers, which comes through our household income study, through our food service programs. And then of course, our ADM counts at the, at the school level. So yeah, this preliminary, I do expect this number to change, whether it goes up or down. I would suspect it's probably going to go up. But I haven't seen the broad data yet. So dividing our current version of our long-term weighted average daily membership into this version of the budget for our long-term, or excuse me, our education spending, we come out with a education spending basically per student, per weighted student of 10,800. So Act 127 states that if your, your increase in spending from FY24 to FY25 is an increase of 10% or more, that is going to trigger a tax rate review. And what that is, is a panel that the Secretary of Education is going to assemble, supposed to be through business managers, through superintendents. And nobody really knows what this is going to look like. We're basically going to have an opportunity to explain our increase and why it's over 10%. And then they will make a recommendation to the secretary as to whether or not the increase is within the board's control or not. So the next part of this is that if you're over 10%, and the secretary finds that it, the increase was not within your control, the next part of Act 127 goes into effect, which will limit your tax increase to 5%. However, if the secretary, if you're, if we're over 10% on this, the spending line here, and the secretary determines that it was within our control of this spending, that provision of Act 27, Act 127 goes away for the remainder of Act 127, which is essentially extending five years. And if at any point during the next five years, we were subject to a tax review, it remains. So if, and once we lose that 5% cap, if we stay under 10% spending, that 5% cap remains in place for the next five years. This is a statewide system of funding for education. So even though this number is limited to a 5% increase, it remains to be seen how the state is going to fund the education system without either adjusting the property yield or finding other sources of revenue to put into that fund to support basically what the schools need to operate. So the numbers here, if you, if you look straight up, a dollar 14 cents would be our current book at this, this budget just for the MAU portion. It's a pretty big, you know, difference between these two numbers. And this is only the MAU portion. We have to kind of take a step back and remember that this is just a secondary portion of our students within the union. We also have to blend this with our elementary school districts that are part of, part of this. So the 15th page, I believe, in your package and online is the first look at the blended tax rate. So kind of taking a look at MAU with the current draft of S U V S D's budget. A lot of notations I need to make on this, that a lot of these numbers are subject to change. And these are, they're old information too. Namely, North Bennington grade school district budget data here is from current year. They haven't met yet. So we don't even have a draft to update those numbers with. And the other thing that I have highlighted in yellow, the common level of appraisal for all of our member towns. This is last year's tax study. We have not received what this year's CLAs are going to be. Last year's letters were dated December 22nd. So I'm anticipating they're coming the day now. So up at the, at the top of this document are basically the breakdowns by town of our elementary students and our secondary students. They have Mount Anthony numbers identified in blue. And just the notation that these figures are based on the preliminary, they're labeling preliminary field file version two from, from the AOE. So these numbers that you're seeing here are exactly what was on the previous page. What we then do is take these numbers and then blend that with the proportion of students that we have by town that are at the secondary level, apply that percentage, do that base tax rate. And same thing happens at the elementary level. So on this version that I'm showing you here, this is assuming kind of a worst-case scenario at this point and that we are over the 10% spending and we didn't get the 5% cap. So this is using those figures as kind of the worst-case scenario. The CLA numbers are pretty big. Last year, they were significant in driving what those tax rates were. So depending upon how things have leveled out or not this year, this could have a significant impact on these numbers too. So I just caution everybody that these are very preliminary. And a lot of these numbers will change. But I just, I know everybody kind of wants to have a peek at, what does this look like in terms of what the tax rate would be? So kind of worst-case scenario with, with the data that I have today, you can see across the bottom there on line 14, what the tax impacts are. Just utilizing this version of the budget and those other ones that are in the current states. Many things can change, many things will change. With that, I will share and turn it back over for questions or?
Yeah, I think this would be a good time for, I know that I had emails since I had emailed several questions and it come from board members too. So I don't know if we want it, if people just want to process this and ask, have additional questions because my name may have answered some of it. Or if people just have questions up in the moment. You know, I have one question. So I know one of the driving factors in my last budget was that, that, that the excess funds for, in the, I think it was, what driving the SU budget was the special ed reimbursement. Is that factor, has that settled out yet? Or is it?
We, we did run basically on the, on the students that we know are, basically are projecting in FY25's budget that could be in excess of that spending threshold. We have run those numbers, might have applied that to basically the assessment that you're seeing.
In what we're saying, okay.
Yeah. The, the initial version, draft one of this budget, I think I was carrying that threshold as $70,000. So essentially, any student that, you know, is receiving services through an IEP that we can tie back and reach that level. Anything over that gets reimbursed at 95% from the agency. The number came in just the other day from the AOE and the threshold for next year, I believe is going to be 66,446. So I was able to pull that back a little bit, which will add a little bit more revenue to those projected costs. You can see that if we function we give a peek at page five. Line 1201, special education. See this significant increase. So essentially, what happened in the current year's budget is that we, there were a number of students that either were aging out from out of district placement or had moved back into the local schools. So we pulled funding for those. And then once the school year started, some of those students ended up back out. So we're planning forward again. But then also part of that was, you know, the fund balance used, being used to offset this year's assessment. So if you kind of look back across the board, you'd see, you know, the actuals, so almost like this year was kind of artificially leveled. Up to where we typically see it. But of course, it is even an increase beyond that as well.
I don't know how I'm missing, where do I see the SU allocation?
You can see it in a couple of different places. On the very first page, the budget by category, it's line number 10. So that's everything all together. So it's, it's admin, it's special education, it's transportation. Includes all of our, you know, technology, the business office, HR. It's all of that moved into one. And then when you look at it, the breakout, I try to have it noted in really small itals under each of the headings on the narrative, what a, what segment of any of the SU assessments are included in those. So like, and for instance, on 1101, so I'm looking at page seven, 1101 direct instruction. This category does include assessments for yellow. And it's also an assessment for the, just a couple of local pairs. There's one at the school and one vacancy at the high school for local pairs. So as you kind of thumb through each of those, if, if an assessment is included in that function, it's noted. With the, kind of like special education kind of thing, is one of that assessment.
Is the increase in physical education because we just added a position?
This is based on the current staff that we have. Projections for what our increases and potential salaries are going to be and what the potential is for our benefits increases. So no, no new staff. It's just based on the existing staff that we have. Comparing it to the current year's budget, I think there may have been some staffing changes, but it happened prior to, there are any in place. So essentially, we're budgeting for the folk.
What are lounge furnishing?
I'm sorry?
Lounge furnishing, I used to, what's that? Page three, under equipment.
I can have the answer. And I believe you can pull that out as well. The second floor of the original building, that is the building, there's three certain nooks that used to have furniture in them over the years that went elsewhere. I don't know what the backstory is, but we have recently put in new seating in the cafeteria. And students have really enjoyed using the high tops. So out of the food service money, we're planning to order this year high tops for all those nooks so that students have another place to eat. And so I believe at this point, we can pull that out as well.
Excellent question. Well, so with respect to the state removal at Southwest Tech, is that falling under, and Renee, this is probably more of a question for you, is that going to fall under a cost hearing agreement with Southwest Tech? Given that it is, if I remember correctly, that's more of the facilities that would have had some. more of the facilities that would have had some percentage sharing or are you now, maybe I'm not up on the list, something?
It's ours, they pay a fixed amount every year.
Increases 90% every year.
It doesn't do that whole style of going down and it costs and assigning costs. Maybe this is what, one year now?
No, I mean, I remember, I mean, I was part of that, I just, the change, but I don't remember, I remember that, at least the agreement, maybe I'm wrong, you can check, but I remember that maybe me and you'd remember, I, the, that that was with respect to like, just like average costs of that, that physically, in things like the roof and things like that were going to be paid by that district. So I guess I would.
Know what you got in that agreement. I mean, you got, but then I don't just cover it.
I know two things that have happened recently. It's kind of been a cooperative effort between the high school and Southwest Tech administration saying, hey, you know what, this is our cost, we'll take care of this kind of bit. So I think it's been more of a mutual agreement as a document and.
And I know that it's a circle and it's going to just end up back here. But I mean, there's more population going into Southwest Tech like that, there is a chance to have that fund, those funds move away from, I mean.
I'll make I'll make notes to revisit that and make sure that it's reflected accurately.
So do you want to ask, there were a lot of questions that I think.
I, my only question was this, I just wanted to see it.
You have a question about the campus security process and what position would that gap?
Right, yes. So we have the three that are currently at the high school. I guess my question was, what are we seeing this year that we're feeling that that additional officers, like, because I believe that there was some statement about another building and the issues between the students in that building and having to go between, is that like, would that new person be strictly for that building?
Yeah, it was, our suggestion was, so this is for the single story structure north of campus along the flood walls. So it's a red brick building, single story. And what we have found is that safety team has been a great addition to the building, a lot of outreach to kids, de-escalation, making, you know, scooping kids up who are struggling to get to classes. And the physical distance to the red brick building just cuts down response time and we actually, which is reactive, we would like to be proactive and actually have a person in the space that meets and greets kids similar to what our existing folks do, staff do in the building. I mean, currently they meet kids at the bus at seven o'clock, have breakfast with them in the cafeteria, you can take a temperature of how the day is going to go, anybody struggling, can connect resources. So the suggestion was that we would have a similar person in place at East Campus, which has, you know, students entering that building first part of the day and then having supports throughout the day. So it's been beneficial in the high school. We thought one other, an additional person would be helpful as we do have an increasing number of kids who are using East Campus for both supports and also regular classes. We teach core subjects out there, kids are traveling back and forth. So it'd be an additional support.
One of the other questions that came up was, you know, every year we review the budgets and we add positions, is there a process, do we have a process in place where this probably where we're evaluating existing positions and reducing them when they're no longer needed or moving around?
Do we have a formal process to review positions that we currently have, decide whether they're still valid? I would say no, we do not have a formal process to review that. Do I think that we have any non-essential positions? No, because staff get reassigned, you know, that they to where the need is. So I, but again, formal process, no. Do I, sitting here, do I think that there are positions that we could do, because I think that one of the questions was, are these, you know, what are critical positions? I would, I wouldn't be flip when I say this, they're all critical or, or they're all not critical. I mean, it's. Principals come to us with their needs, we review it in the budget process. There has been nothing that has been presented to me that I, that I wouldn't support. I was pleased to see the positions had been removed from what was asked for and has gone into, I mean, to be funded by other means that will allow us to support these positions. But do I think we have any excess positions? No, I do not. And I know it's, I think it's a reflection of how education, you know, has changed. And we haven't added classroom teachers in a while, but it's, it is the rightful positions to to support our staff dealing with behaviors and cultural changes that they're seeing in the schools.
I actually think the the new act is is to the detriment of districts who have underfunded themselves for years, you know, if you're looking at percentages and we've always maintained the low and now we're going to have to, you know.
Correct.
Carefully.
It seems like an artificial number to put out there and I understand that they want to control unchecked growth, but you're absolutely right, anybody who's held the line is going to have a tighter run. But maybe, you know, whoever this super secret panel is going to be assembled will be reasonable and won't listen to that, because we can demonstrate how we have been under the state average.
Yeah, actually, in the, in the S U packet at their last meeting, I did include basically a snapshot of where we are as an S U in comparison to the average. But basically it was the the recalculation of this year's numbers using long-term weighted E D M. Actually, I can probably pull it up if you want to keep talking, but I need to share so you have an idea.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, not looking to add to the budget, but are we ever going to be able to fix the P A system in the gym? I don't think I've heard whatever he's saying for three years. It's very, it's awful.
So one of the things that I'm, I'm new at this, but I think it's, it's speakers and that the speakers are angled in the, like, and so I'm, we're looking at like changing kind of the angle of the speaker. There is a new system, but I do think it has to do with the echo in the, of the speakers. So that is on my.
I can tell you our, our public address systems are being addressed by our tech department in all our schools because we struggled when we changed our phone system that it was not compatible with some of the analog public address systems that are in our buildings. But in a series of meetings with Caesar I T, I'm hoping that there are solutions coming soon for that. Whether that is affecting what's happening in the gymnasium, I don't know.
Both at the middle school and the high school, you don't have any speaker system placed on cafeteria. Middle schools is subpar, the high schools is subpar. And then the P A system throughout the building in which you communicate things like, hey, we need you to move to the auditorium, we're having fire drill, all of those are dated. We have chased the P A system in the high school for months and I can happily take all of you on a tour of the closet that is required to fill that motherboard just for the P A system. Remind the fact that when the clocks have to be moved forward or back an hour, we have a walking of the clocks. We literally collect clocks, travel to a hallway, reset them and put them back. So these are all things under the deferred maintenance list that, you know, again, and I want to say this really clearly, M A U has done a great job in 10 years I've been doing budget, I feel like we've always been responsible, but we've definitely deferred things in all of the buildings, even the new middle school, which is now 20 years old that then needed some care.
We saw that with, you know, the difference between tonight's building operations budget and what it was in the first, you know, Holly presented us with a list of here's, everything that observed that is wrong with your buildings and probably wasn't everything, but we also had to come back with a more realistic number and a multi-year plan to address. And I've often said, our buildings, particularly the high school, is old, it's approaching 60 years old, but it isn't already, right, 64 to go to open end. So I'm, what's, I worry about what's on the walls, under the floors and the, never mind the the physical space. So there's a lot of work to be done in the buildings. I'm sure it's not just, you know, the public, it's the public address system everywhere
On the multi-year plan, is that something that we would be able to see in a future?
Yeah, Holly told me it's, it's almost ready.
Yes, I'm really, I'm excited about it. We have.
I'm not asking you to present it today.
Oh, like, let me tell you all about it, no. So we have, just to update you guys, we're in sort of three master planning processes. One is looking at the schools through the superintendent's office to see how they're used all the individual little ones. And so that process is going on and how we're using the buildings. The state is also working on a facilities assessment report for each building in the state, which we've gone through the first round of assessments, we've provided our feedback and we're waiting for the revised one back. And then we're going through our own to look at all the systems and all the finishes and furnishing, furnishings and equipment and identifying like these are immediate needs, these are three-year, five-year, 10-year. And I've got the elementary district almost done and M A U. So I'm a wealth of useless knowledge, I'm happy to talk to anyone about it before you have one of those done, that on the agenda for a few.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a massive project, aren't you? It's here also is, those who are on the, the elementary board, you know, that we have contracted with N S, N S Tech to do a study for building use and Holly had to contribute a lot of information along with our elementary principals for that study too. So it was kind of, I've seen perhaps, let's get it there.
Definitely have that.
Oh, sure.
There's the, yeah.
And then just to add, when we get the facilities pieces together, we need to integrate with the teachers and the staff and the faculty, everyone who uses the building for their input. So that's, that'll be like a, I have many faces out. Do you want to walk us through what we're, so?
So again, this is the A O E's recalculation of education spending for long-term weighted A D M, if long-term weighted E D M was in effect this year with the approved budgets for F Y 24. So the state average of spending per long-term weighted average daily membership is just under 13,000. Arlington's is just over 13,000. North Bennington being just a K through six district is just about 16,000. Sandgate's about 12, M A U 93, 50, and S V U E S D about 11,700. So comparatively, we're very close, you know, in some cases a little bit over and then some cases way under with this board being a particular. Again, I just, a bit of caution though, because the S U assessment was so low this year, that is a significant contributing factor that enough of being that low.
Clearly we're not done with this budget and we will, you know, we need, we'll need another meeting in January, once Renee has more refined numbers. S U is meeting Wednesday after return from winter break. Hopefully we will finalize an S U budget so that can become a real number and.
That's great.
Hold on, hold on for January.
So one more. I was wondering, Mike, we could, we could ask, there was a lot of questions about how sports and clubs.
I mean, we have quite a trajectory here tonight.
Yes, that's right. And I understand that you're new, but I was wondering if the collective group could give some input and feedback on, you know, how we just, how budgets are developed, how you make the decision and we just talked a little bit about that process if you can.
Yeah, so what you have, I think Renee spelled out on, on page 12, and I made some adjustments and we had some, you know, discussions. When the coaches, and it's just the varsity coaches who are in charge of all of the budget for the program, so you were the football coach, you're in charge of J V, the middle school, you kind of are the keeper of the, of the budget. The big thing that I'm, and I'm not sure it was clear all the time for all the coaches is the stuff its budget is, stuff that's going to stay within the program. So uniforms, like balls, equipment that you're keeping from year to year. We also have activity accounts and that's when, like, you would spend on a sweatshirt or, you know, warmups or something like that, that you're going to actually give to the, the players and they're allowed to keep them. So I think some of the coaches in their initial requests put in some things that, as I was going through and Renee shared with me, I'm like, well, no, that would be out of an activity account or something. So that's one of my jobs is to go through, not knowing what they ordered, like specifically from the years past, it's a, it's a little tough, like, oh, maybe they need, you know, you know, new equipment or something. I know, for example, like track was up last year because they needed a piece of equipment that was, it was just a one-time order, like, I think it was a big pole ball mat or something that was, that was, that was needed. So for the most part, we go through, the coaches will put in their requests and then I would look through it and kind of go through necessary, maybe not necessary, can get inside of activities account and stuff like that. So that's kind of how it, how it goes. Usually we say like five years, six years per kind of set of uniforms. So like a new uniform would not be every other year or something. But they do for the varsity, I know they have a home jersey and a weight jersey and so you're, you're kind of looking to, to cycle through that. But it's a little bit of how the process goes and then trying to figure out what equipment is needed, some sports you need more equipment than than other sports. I also said to Renee, the bigger items, you know, if you needed new goals for soccer or like lacrosse needed new, you know, goal equipment or something that, that would be out of the athletics, you know, I wouldn't necessarily assign that to a specific sport, but that's more like kind of the athletic supplies and equipment and things like that. And the only other thing that was a bigger increase, and I know Renee put it in the, in the kind of explanations with some travel expenses. And one of the things that's happened is like all of our funds now go into Renee at central office. So like for a good example, it's the wrestling tournament, there's going to be a tournament first weekend in January. They used to keep the funds for their tournaments that they would take in and they would then use those to offset when they go to New England's or when they go like on travel. We now take those funds and send them to central office. So if a team is coming from out of state, they're, they're paying a fee to be in the tournament. So now appropriately, I think we're budgeting for spending money for that travel because the monies that they're getting are going into like the general fund. So that's just a change. I think that's been a change of recent, where those funds are, are coming to central office.
And certainly up to the board, if you wanted to go back the other way, I think it was, you know, just the, the change in, in our directors and, you know, managing things differently and how they wanted to handle things. So, you know, that's the way it is now, but it's definitely within the board's purview to say, no, like, you keep the money in the activities account, you, you raise the money if you want to, you know, go to these tournaments and have the overnight expenses or do you want to keep it at the district level and then take those incoming revenues from those fees to help offset those costs a little bit? But basically. But basically, the, this budget would be supporting those expenses.
I would, I personally defer to what you think makes the most sense for the.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they all, the activity count, I know everything came to central office.
With gate receipts.
Yeah, everything.
Gate, gate receipts, yes.
Gate receipts too. So the, the funding for like when you go to a game, that goes to central office. Yes.
I understood it, but.
So the, the, the accounts, if I'm correct, are going to like overseen by central office, the activities accounts.
Managed, managed at the school level.
Manage at the school level, but, but they're overseen by central office.
Are you confused why there would have been tournament fees that weren't part of it?
No, I, I thought when we, a long time ago, we said that all of those things were supposed to be coming to the central office to be managed. It shouldn't be managed at the individual level, that school. So I thought that's.
Managed by like the activities office.
Right. And so the money, I mean, from time year to year, you can't change a person they are with. Change a person that's managing. And so we back to this question, I want to keep it and manage it here versus a standard system of managing money.
It's not per person, it's per activity. Like it goes, it stays with the activity, but all the money is, you know, supervised through central office, but we parse it out based on the activity. So like I know, for example, football, they did this fundraiser, they have this amount of money in their account. Again, it all goes over.
It's here.
Yeah, yeah, it's like the, the, the funding, but we, we keep track of who gets what. That's what we do, but it all, yeah.
In terms of how you use it, but it's, it's being managed here.
Correct.
Because we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not giving it a draw.
Yeah, and it's not, it's, it is a, like, the, it doesn't come yet.
Okay.
So I guess one of the questions I have, I'm not a lacrosse player, so I don't know, but when I'm looking at the budgets and I'm looking at girls lacrosse eating two thousand dollars a year consistently and the boys eating eight.
So it's, it's the equipment, it's the equipment, it's the, it's the helmets and the pads.
And those are not reasonable each year.
Well, they have to like, they're constantly having to upgrade and check for, I mean, the, the game is, is very different. Yeah, so it is the equipment and it's, it's the pads and the helmet that is much more expensive on the boys' side than on the, on the girl's side. But for the most part, we do try to, to level things out. And I know, I think the lacrosse spending went up based on, guess what? Some of their equipment, like similar to like in football, it's got to be, after a certain amount of years, it's got to be, like the helmets have to be replaced for concussion protocols.
I do find it interesting when you bring up lacrosse, I do find it interesting that we pay for the helmets, but we don't pay for the goggles. I've always thought that that was weird.
I don't know why we don't pay for the goggles.
But that's it.
So I think the goggles could be, I think goggles could be something that the, the coach pays out of the budget.
They're not, everybody brings their own.
I know, but I would, that's, that's a conscious decision. Yeah, yeah.
If I read this right, middle school, if we were to just look at basketball boys, it's a three thousand on the, at the park, at the high school, at the MAU level, high school level and a thousand at the middle school level. So that's, that's four thousand dollar program. And then JV comes out of the three thousand.
Yeah, like out of that three thousand would be JV. And it's going to depend on, so a lot of the, again, we're talking basketballs. We're talking like the equipment that's sticking with. They may just have gotten new uniforms, so they, maybe they don't need. So it's really, you know, there are some sports that use like, for example, smaller balls, like a softball or baseball, you're going to need a lot more of that equipment than basketballs per se.
And the varsity coach sets the middle school budget as well.
Spends the middle school budget and, and sets it, yeah. So it's all through, you know, through that, you know, the, yeah.
So nothing on this list that I may have, this has to do with salary, this is just.
Correct, it's supplies and equipment.
This is a equipment list, not, not improving money for the people.
Yeah.
I, I actually haven't. So I know this is through my parent lens, my child's on this Nordics meeting.
Okay.
And I, it's, I'm just curious how our district handles like the opportunity, like there's no transportation that I know of to cross off, right, from the school. And so for me, you know, it's fine for my kids or whoever, you know, we all manage to get people there. How do we make, how do we make this sport or these types of sports accessible for other kids who either don't have the, the parent involvement or don't, who just don't have this parent schedule that can get them there at the middle school level?
Good question. I know there are, you know, communal like car, like the high school kids share rides up to the, up to the mountain. And I know there are kids that, you know, one parent may bring, you know, four kids or five, you know, you know, in a van up to the, you know, mountain. But it is transportation. I mean, you look at, I know Tim's Nordic dot himself, you know, and, and getting that transportation.
We have explored using a bus line, school bus line, barrier is can't take skis on it. Can't put a ski bag on it. Of course, there's no bus back down the hill at the end of practice. But there have, in the, in the last 10 years, there's been conversations about at least using the two-four run up the mountain. But you are corrected as a challenge.
It just, I just want to make sure that if we, you know, as a district, to make sure that we're making it accessible to students, you know, to all students who are eligible.
And it is Nordic, it, it is unique and it's the same for all schools, you know, like, you know, Brooklyn goes to Mountain, like there, there's no school is, you know, that accessible, so.
I know I'm there a lot when they come in. I'm always impressed that our coach talks to them about, you know, you shouldn't be passing or going too fast and they have a lot of people in their cars and they, it seems to work.
Of course, adding cost for bus to the budget.
You know, I, I, I'm not being flippant and I'm not.
And I have no idea what they would cost and I, I know how much due for struggles provide buses at the same time because they, right after school, then they're doing the elementary run. So they, they would not necessarily have buses available, but I mean, it's harder for the middle school parents. The, the middle school skier, the middle school parents, because they all get carpool from. I don't oppose to exploring what that, that, like, if you want to take that on, what that would, what that costs and of our transportation, or near your back, you could, you know, I, I, I. Cause I think some, some of this is just tradition, it's always been that way. So like then let it happen and let it continue, but I don't, I don't know, Mike, is, is that the only sport that we don't buy transportation for? Swim, right?
I mean, swim goes, they have to make it over the, but that's the main, you know, the YMCA, the, the rec center.
And if we play at SBC, they get there on their own.
Yep.
Right, it's cross-country asset too, you know.
They go to Willow Park when they, yep. We do, we do provide buses to, you know, the meets and when they're, when they're going to compete for sure. It's just the day-to-day practice and, I mean, unfortunately, they haven't been able to get up to, you know, prospect very, so that's the other thing. It's an, yeah, it's an.
Or maybe for like a picture one for the.
You do have that.
Budget lines and you're.
So they do have a trailer like that they, that they store their equipment in.
Thank you for. Um, I have one more question. Is, where is the drama budget or like theater?
Um, it's, it's a, well, it's a separate function code, so it's just one above the, basically fourteen hundreds.
Okay.
Um, and I think we did bump that up to five thousand dollars this year.
You're talking for supplies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it's another area that is an asset to the students that we should, I don't think it's sports.
When it comes to transfer, back to athletics transportation, when it comes to transportation, is there, is there a cutoff or a protocol or a how is it chosen when a coach bus is used versus when two-four is engaged?
Was that question?
When do we use a coach bus? It's like, when we go to Burlington.
Yeah, so a lot of it has to do with the equipment. I mean, that's the biggest, when you're taking a football team and you have to use two buses possibly to like, because with the, with a coach bus, you can put everything underneath and then you, and then you go from there. So it's really, it, it's actually cost like, almost cost neutral to like send one, you know, coach bus as opposed to, as opposed to two school buses.
And I know you knew, Mike, it's still, you may, I didn't know if there was like a rule, like we go over a certain distance as a coach.
I don't think there is. I mean, I, I know I coached soccer and we'd go up to St. John's Bay in Burlington and we were riding a, a school bus. I do, I think it just has to do with like, if you can't fit everybody on, you know, you, you could go.
It can make people, it can make people squabble a little bit.
Yes, no, because I think that's the, that's the thought process. I do know it used to be for state championship games, the policy used to be if you want to take a coach bus up to like a state championship like game, but then there are some teams that are like, no, we're sticking with the same drive, like we love our like two-four drivers, you know, so everybody wants, no, I want this school bus and I want this. But that tends to be the, the deal is like, you know, to be able to like store the equipment and stuff like that underneath a coach bus.
I, I noticed and maybe we could look at, that some of the schools have an individual trailer that travels with somebody, somebody takes all their equipment in the trailer. And, and they follow the bus right along.
I've seen that too.
Yeah.
The ski team at MAU has that, that's a result of fundraising though. The coach uses his own personal truck to haul that to Crasberry and all points north of that. That's not through a school function, so. But that allows for a school bus to then travel to the border of Canada with, you know, twenty kids and without having to be like coach or two buses.
Absolutely. You can just, I mean, if that's part of the function, not want to hype on something to be there, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other budgetary questions? Thank you for taking the time over.
The only one I have is, what is our, is waiting for our regular January meeting sufficient finalized this, Renee? Because the nights for January are filling up.
I don't know, I don't know how the board is feeling about this budget and if there's it needs to take some time to digest it and then want to come back with directives as to like this, you know, is acceptable or no, this is a tolerable limit, but again, we don't have all the pieces to the puzzle right now to be able to say whether or not we're at that.
January seventeenth is the third Wednesday.
And that's pushing it through your warning, right?
Yeah, because even then after that, we have to, we would have to have a special meeting to warn it. The warning has to be posted between January twenty-fourth and February fourth. February fourth is a Sunday, so it's essentially February second.
We kind of have to wait till after the SB, the SU budget, right?
So we're, we're looking at after January third anyway, right?
And the fourth is, we have the Arlington budget reading on January fourth. That's why I'm, I'm asking, so nights are disappearing. We just got some dates today for North Bennington budget meetings. So the week of the eighth, the ninth is the Union Elementary Board. The tenth will be North Bennington and Arlington again. Did you say the eleventh is going to be, or Sandgate's the eleventh?
That basically puts you back at the seventh.
Well, or we can, you know, we can double up on.
It could meet earlier.
Right, Sandgate is scheduled right now at five thirty by Zoom. So we, that's Thursday, the eleventh. Could be, you see, Sandgate could meet earlier. Do this at like six, eleven. Can't make the eleven?
No, I can do it. I, I mean, I think I would rather given, I mean, if it's, it depending on what happens with the SU currently, if I'm wrong, we're going to be making a decision that I mean, I give you, if people were comfortable with this budget, we would be, our deciding that we were going to be over that 10% threshold. Is that, is actually, so I mean, for me.
Process just gets better.
Right, I mean, it could, it could get better, but I mean, do you know the dollar amount that we have to cut in order to get below? And I don't want to put.
No, I haven't run it because I, I knew somebody was going to ask, but I was so late getting this together, it's okay.
I think I'd rather make sure we were, we were thought whole in making this decision. But it's up to you.
Would you like to tentatively hold for six o'clock at the eleventh, on the eleventh?
I'm aware. I, I should, maybe we'll be able to call, but.
What day is it?
It's Thursday.
What time is this? Yeah, I could probably do Thursday at six.
You want to just put as a hold and then we'll.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll allow Amy connect, you know, email you, update you. Because that, it works if Sandgate is running the bump in five o'clock, because otherwise we'd have to look at something else and the others that. I don't know if North Bennington is going to meet on Wednesday, the tenth, if they're setting budget meetings, they may not do their regularly on the tenth, so we'll, that's a possibility too, we'll, we'll explore that and see.
But I think if potentially if you meet on the eleventh we have a sense of what things look like, you would be able to possibly take action at your regular meeting and then I might be even able to have the warning ready for signing.
So why don't we?
Possibly be done earlier than later, but it, you know, that depends on.
It's on the eleventh at six o'clock or tentative.
Tentative as, as in, like a special meeting.
Yeah, special, yeah.
Right, do you know of hands? We have a game.
I know I will.
You will not?
Um, practice.
Just practice, okay.
I just.
Okay.
So we have.
It's not as loud as now, I can't, I'd rather know the game.
Like Susan will be there. There's no game meeting for you, just the.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll make every opportunity to call soon, but I'm on a work trip.
Okay. Moving on, what we moved to the consent agenda. We have minutes, warrants, retirements, absence, reservations, nominations, and there's also field trips. The first, it's located, it's listed on the back page, but it's not on the front. Would you like to go through this one by one or?
Members talk together?
Yes. Um, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, in any discussion. See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's just training a lengthy budget meeting and did not prepare a formal report. A couple of things I do want to remind people, the last day of school, anybody listening, I know, is tomorrow. We're not in session on Friday. Tomorrow is a full day of school, it's not a half day. And.
Rumors going around, that.
Yeah, full day of school. But what is unusual is when we return, January second is a full day of professional learning for staff. Students do not return until January third, so that, you know, might, that might add a little confusion. So January first is the holiday, staff returns January second and January third, the students return. But I'm also here to take any questions that board members may have for me.
Do you want to talk briefly about if there's a parking problem?
Yeah, I, I don't have that information now because I, the well, let's talk a little about what happened. You all got an email from somebody who my understanding did not reach out and meet, with the principal did not reach out and meet with the superintendent. Our policy says that when you do get a complaint, you refer to the superintendent, which I feel that we did. I spoke to the principal and I know that he was going to hold a meeting with them and he did explain to me like people get issued tickets at high school. people get issued tickets at high school, but it's considered if you come and you you appeal it, uh, it is frequently torn up as a warning, uh, do it again and then, you know, then it may be a ticket that that is old, so that didn't, that did not happen, nobody approached the administration at the high school uh with a formal complaint about the ticket. And that, I don't know what else you've learned there.
I can answer Dave's question from before the meeting too, so parking has not changed in the last twenty years, there's a designated student parking area north of campus near the wall. Um, all those spaces are reserved for visitors or or staff. Uh, we're all required to have a sticker. Uh, there is signage in the parking lot that clear, on the north parking lot that clearly says this is staff. On the flip side of the pole says this is for students. There is not enough parking on campus to accommodate every student and you know this is a, go through the school year more and get cars. Um, so it is one of the few senior privileges, we offer seniors first dibs. Um, I don't think we've sold a hundred stickers this year so far to seniors. Uh, but they have the privilege to park in that parking lot. We also do not employ a parking monitor, so there's not someone running around in a golf cart issuing, you know, tickets. Um, so it is infrequent that we do it, sometimes we'll give kids heads up and that usually causes widespread panic and cars moving around all over the place. Um, but occasionally we'll have either safety staff will go out and put a sticker in your, say, you're in a wrong spot. I will assure the board that I too got a sticker, or I got a parking ticket within the last two weeks because I swapped cars with my kiddo who was going back to UVM and needed a functioning car, I failed to notify the office, I was issued a ticket for being in the wrong space. So, um, I did what I encouraged my students to do, I went to the front office, I explained myself, it was a warning, it was torn up. Done. I have met with that student, uh, the other piece of that letter was a concern about busing. Um, if if folks want to address that, I'm happy to do whatever work the superintendent needs me to do to come back and talk about that too. I have a small piece of that and not the whole piece of that as far as the one and a half miles. Does that answer your question about the parking?
The distance is that by the superintendent?
Well, the one and a half mile is in policy, so.
And that's, that's his, and you said you know, but I'm saying that.
But we have experienced that in the past where it may be in the arc of one and a half miles, but if you walked, it may be actually longer because, you know, there is no direct line, but and we've struggled before with someone who is at, you know, one point four. You know, if I, it's a long walk, um. I try to be consistent and once I make exceptions, uh, consistency goes out the window, so, uh, it's the arc is one and a half miles.
Could students walk to a bus stop that's closer than one and a half miles but outside of their?
Do I think students do that? Probably yes.
That was the answer, honestly.
Yeah. Do we, you know, it is what I've always thought about, like I know particularly against our elementary schools, we have students who ride the bus, who wouldn't be eligible, but it's still a good distance from where they are. And our position's always been if there's seats on the bus, they can get on the bus. Whenever it comes to the time, and we haven't seen that in a long time, that's probably one of the reasons why there's so many cars at the high school. If the bus was ever at full capacity, then we wouldn't be able to do that, but I'm all for letting somebody on, somebody who get a, get a bus ride rather than particularly when inclement weather, but, yeah, so uh, I'm not aware, and I I could be wrong, but I'm not aware of where we may have had drivers before who would tell us something, you're not, you can't get on, but uh, I have spoken before personally to the bus company saying that can we, and I know Renee has when she is a judge of transportation, but if we can accommodate, we will.
Okay, any other questions? We move on to policies, um, we have policy number five, one, two, zero, concussion management, this is a warning. Um, committee is brought together.
Yeah.
And then we have uh policy number five, zero, eight, four, personal use of wireless communication. Um, and this is to adopt, can I have a motion to warn the first and adopt the second?
Same with.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Um, a personal note, I did, uh, one of my good friends lives in Delmar and they instituted those, um, the bags with the cell phones. And I guess it's going very well. So. Um, moving on to the administrator's report, we we do not have student representatives today, so we'll go to our.
I speak on the students because one of them was in the choir and boy, they do a hell of a job. And the, first off, they're good, second off, there's so many of them and they do so many events. I'd like to send Lynn Sweet and other, uh, congrats or nice job or something like that, but I thought one of them, you said maybe she'd do their.
They have rehearsal this evening, yeah, preparing for that. Performance out of West End.
Okay, you can go. Thank you for this.
I'm just interested in what's on his sweatshirt.
Gets from staff, so, uh, it's, yeah, because I quote this movie perfectly and for Mike's effect, because he had to put up a thing. So I can easily track this.
Well, lucky they just didn't wear the full costume today.
Famous elf costume.
Yeah.
You got to come on?
Yeah, it is tomorrow.
Be visiting Growing Upright and cranking them up before sending them home with mom and dad, so. All right, and nothing else, um, I just want to, a couple of thank yous. Of course, Dave steals my thunder, uh, because he and I both sat in the theater last week, uh, we had a band performance Tuesday night, it was a really good concert. Uh, I've never heard a piece done with sandpaper on boards before, that was really entertaining. Uh, jazz band was outstanding as well, a nice cover of Van Morrison. Um, and then a nice audience that came out, on Thursday evening, we were in the seats for the chorus. Um, a a very good performance and Lynn does a nice job of breaking them up into different performance groups, highlighting them. They were joined by two staff members, uh, Matt Upright and uh and then again, the head of the Zen Day, excuse me, married name, uh, and it was just really nice, they came and performed for us today, again, at the faculty meeting, so it kind of puts in the spirit for the holiday. And also that's to Lynn Sweet and Mason Mills, who is our director of the band. Also, I wanted to thank How Friday, uh, and the core, um, on Saturday had the opportunity to attend the reefering at the Vet's Home, I've never been to that event. I saw like everybody else in the paper come out, help us out. Spent two hundred people there and we laid wreaths in twenty minutes, five hundred, all was there, it's always nice to see the kids presenting the colors and participating, I appreciate that. Um, Mike is new athletic director, but I'll make a plug for him, uh, his sports activities are coming on, please check out the calendar, please come and visit. Uh, we were at the West Rutland game last night, a little bit rough, but I thought, I thought the ladies did a nice job. Their defense kept heads up, it was a little bit of a rowdy crowd, um, but they did a nice job with their poise. Uh, and then the last thing I I've I've made there is a request of Jim, and it just, if it's all right, I'll give you a heads up. Spring, the high school will be visited by uh an accreditation team from EAS, that's the New England Association of Schools. This is a ten year cycle, um, and so we are preparing for what is called as a decennial visit. Um, they will be here March third through the sixth. Uh, I'll be requesting through Jim, uh, time at the board meetings where you can make uh an opportunity to talk a little bit about that process, because the board has a piece of that. It's actually an interview with the team, superintendent and the board, so I'll make that information available and Jim can.
Signed the room vouchers today, so.
So it it's a bit of a process, hopefully we can give you a short overview and give you some information before um, the chair and the superintendent will invite members to sit and, uh, appreciate that. All right.
Jim? Yeah, you want to give me a phys ed curriculum? The central office sent me something, but it it doesn't tell me what activities we do. I kind of let she that.
He didn't send it because I said I would send it to you, so.
I got.
You sent, we sent it.
It doesn't, you know, it doesn't list what activities we do. It talks about what we'd like to accomplish, but it doesn't tell me whether we play golf, football, soccer, whatever. That's what I was going to have to.
I know my daughter said skateboarding, this was.
I was, I did see skateboarding.
Did you skateboard?
I did not, I did not, I I thought it would fall. So they were.
Yeah, I mean.
I just wanted to think that the principal is ignoring you, did.
Oh, like we sent you up to here.
Yeah.
I'm I'm happy to continue to work through more.
Yeah, I don't know if that activity is necessarily part of a curriculum, because they can fluctuate, but maybe we'll get you a list of what activities the instructors are doing this year. Why don't, why don't we have the principal share that at his report next month? Then at them, since it was asked publicly, there also could be people at home or teachers, so principal could make that part of the, that would be probably a more deductive way to do it.
It will come in a menu form, you know that Dave, that, because there are group activities and individual sports. My best to give you a most updated list.
Thank you.
Ready, toughest time this lot of the night? All right, so I just want to highlight a couple of positive.
Will you feel better for next month where we reversed it, we rotated it, the middle school goes first?
You know, I've been waiting for two and a half years for that opportunity.
Move back to the chair.
Okay.
I thought I almost got it earlier, because you said it, but I got something, something happened.
The agenda though.
All right, I'll jump in aside, um, so just to highlight a couple of positive things, I'll start off actually the same as Tim was starting off, we had a really successful horse concert Monday night, um, just some kudos to to Matt Edwards, our our course of music teacher. Uh, he he uh self described this as the the best concert he's ever been part of. Like he had a string quartet come and join uh the students and he actually uh hand wrote the music for all the parts of it. And, you know, personally wrote the music for all the parts of it and they played, you know, a variety of different music, uh, you know, some old and new. And, uh, you know, just, it was a really good experience for students to play with, you know, some, some you know, professional level local musicians, um, you know, as part of that concert, so that's really cool. Um, uh, I have continued to work regularly with my eighth grade student council, uh, who's a pretty active group again this year. Um, I actually have one student in particular who was accepted in the page program, uh, but not failure, so they're going to be doing that soon, so. Um, that's a, that's a pretty cool experience and she's part of my regular meetings with my other students. And they've organized, one of the many things that they're doing right now is they organize a spirit week for this week, uh, leading up to the break, so, uh, you know, they've been advertising that and people have been participating, staff and students have been participating in that throughout the week. Um, I have a a couple of different staff that have come to me wanting to organize some uh like community building, culture building activities at the school, both for students and staff, some different different activities, some that are targeted more for students, some that are target, targeting more for staff. We had a uh simple activity going around the building today that was called, I brought a little piece, a secret snowflake. Uh, there's like a secret snowflake challenge, it was very simple, there was these little secret snowflakes around, they gave them out to a couple of staff members at the beginning of the day and it was really simple, if you passed the staff member in the hallway, you just said, do you have a snowflake? And if they had a snowflake, they had to give it up to you, to just for staff participated in today. And, um, at the end, whoever was left with snowflakes, there was a, a, you know, a prize that was offered. And again, so when I, this was first presented to me, I was like, okay, you know, just kind of like wrapping my mind around this, but when, you know, time that we're really trying to focus on staff retention, staff well-being. Um, it's amazing what little activities like this can do to just kind of get people laughing, bring a smile to their face, build some camaraderie. Um, I actually ended up with a snowflake at the end of the day, which was like a two thirty game time, just happened.
You can just hide in your office when you snow.
It's so funny that you say that, that's why, so another staff member, I I came into my office, it was like five minutes left, and another staff member was in my office hiding behind the door. Because she, because she had a snowflake and she didn't want to give it up, and so I walked in, I said, you have a snowflake? Because we were all kind of down in the office area, and she's, I got, I got the snowflake by, just by chance and that, but uh, there was some nice prizes that were given out at the end. There was some pictures taken and, uh, so it was just, it was just nice seeing, you know, a lot of laughter, a lot of fun. Uh, we have another one for students coming up that I could, I I won't dive into right now, but I'll report back to you after that event and I'll tell you about that one. I, this is not, oh, probably, I probably should have ended, I was trying to flick these the other way around, but, um, I just had a little note that we're, uh, we're continuing to work on our, uh, continuous improvement plan goals. And I'm working with closely with Laura Boudreau and district leadership, they've, uh, engaged principals and directors in discussions about helping craft the uh twenty four, twenty seven continuous improvement uh goals at the district level. And I've been working with my leadership team and Laura Boudreau and district leadership about engaging my leadership team and staff in the process of writing our twenty four, twenty seven building level goals too. So I just wanted to, you know, put a little plug in for that and, uh, obviously we'll be, I'm sure there'll be more discussion from from district leadership and, uh, principals about the continuous improvement plan goals. That's all I have tonight.
Move on to committee reports, uh, suddenly a field update. If you want to, we, I believe you're on the committee, right, I didn't know if you wanted to briefly give an update on it or, or if it's, we can also put.
I don't have any updates, I, for chair. I know we're meeting and.
Meeting, planning.
We met la, like, we met as a committee a couple of weeks ago.
We're going to be having some town halls, we're planning that, doing research.
They've got gold stars for doing it.
Yes, with David's.
You know, um, but, yeah, so I think there'll be an upcoming meeting probably right after, uh, the start of the new year and then we'll have more to report out, but it's, it's planned, behind the scenes planning going on.
Um, we'll move on to the open board seat, um, so we have an open board seat due to Wendy's resignation. Um, I think we have a decision to make on whether.
You have thirty days to fill it from knowledge of when we tell the, when the term clerk is notified, otherwise it stays open until the next election. Uh, what you really really need to do is, this board should vote, uh, because you lost your S U, one of your S U representatives, so. I don't know with the holiday season, are you really going to be able to solicit and fill somebody for a seat that then, you know, budget meetings in January, February, we tend not to meet and then March is for your, you know, reelection and so if we can function with this size board, uh, and we have been, I I recommend you keep it this way, but see if, uh, you could at least get somebody who wants to join the S U board, but.
I'll do. We are, I had, I had an email a couple of weeks ago about Rex Moore, I remember. Get it, I participate on two of the boards already, I nominate myself, so. I don't know what the process is for that, but.
Uh, it's not an appointment by the chair, like your other committees, you have, this board has to vote on their representative.
So I'd make a motion to support Glenn as a as a member of the S U board.
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Do you want to put yourself?
No, I was just gonna say if somebody needed to do it, I would, but.
You want?
If I want to, I might as well do three. And I've got.
There you go.
Availability in January, so I'll make.
It's gonna be.
It's just another one.
It's another one. Yeah.
Okay, so with no other nominations, um, all those in favor of having Glenn be our S U rep as well?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have no chair's report, uh, thank you everyone for participating in the budget process, I know it's a longer meeting, but I think it's valuable that the board sees this, uh, awards that.
And if I could say anything about the budget, I think it worked well, the process, so if there's questions between now and our next meeting, get them to Stephanie, who then got them today and Renee distributed them to all the administrators who were hurt and enjoyed, so the process worked.
Was that enough time, did you guys have to, almost enough time?
Yeah, I think.
Never enough?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It was really up there.
Okay, great, can I have a, um, motion to withdraw?
Second.